I was gonna watch our meeting, if I can mute it. There it is.
Okay, alright. Looks like we're live and ready to go. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Work Session for tonight, November 9th, 2020, 4:30, at the Burlington Memorial Auditorium, 200 Front Street. Tonight on our proposed regular agenda, well, I'm gonna change that, I did make a promise. Tonight, we're gonna do a presentation by Mr. Hoth, Andrew Hoth, of Shoreline Railroad. We're gonna let him go first, so he doesn't have to live through our city stuff. So, the lectern is yours, Andrew.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Andrew Hoth. Our family owns and operates Burlington Junction Railway. What I want to talk to you for a few minutes about tonight is how the wings of the flood wall here impact our east passing track just outside here, and how we're looking to relocate that passing track, and how that benefits the flood wall project and other benefits to the city, and how what we're looking for from the city and to help relocate that passing track. So, basically, our main line, which would be the western track out there, will stay in place and intact, and we've raised it to a level of where it'll be a flood level of 21 feet, based on that river gauge that's out by the railroad bridge out there, where the north rail gate will be. By removing the passing track to the east there, it saves the city from having to build a double rail gate at the north part there. And I think Leo from V and K may have indicated to you that building a single rail gate versus a double rail gate is a cost savings on this project. The other benefits of moving that passing track out of the way there will, and we've already seen this at High Street, we had a switch point that was in the middle of that crossing. That's out of there now, and I know the city's done work to put that crossing back in, and the approach worked back in, so that's a better crossing. Then at Washington Street and at Jefferson Street, you'll also just have a single-track crossing rather than a double crossing, which will be less expensive to put in and less expensive to maintain in the long run. So, if that passing track isn't there for us, where does it go? Well, where we intend to move it is north up by the Marina, to the west side of our main line, between the main line and the retaining wall for Bluff Road there. And it would be, our plan would be, a switch would go in north of the North Front Street Crossing there, so there would be no additional crossing created there. And we run it about 1,300 feet north, up along that area there, with the terminus just short of where the current levee gate is right now. What we would need your help from in that area is, and I believe Jim Frenel may have mentioned this in the past, is there's some ground in there where we would need an easement from the city to make sure that where we would put that track would be all on our ground, or ground that we would have an easement from the city. We think we have most of the ground, by and large, is within easement that we already have, but I think some of it would encroach into the city area. I have Klinger, the surveyors, have been working on describing and trying to figure out exactly where that area is, so I could come back and present that to you, exactly the area that we would be talking about. We would make sure in that easement that the city would have any access that it needed to do maintenance on that retaining wall, or for any other utility purposes between there and the track. And so, there wouldn't really be a cost for the city there, other than granting us that easement. I don't think it's space that the city's looking at using for any other purpose than maintenance right now, and that's where we would intend to move that track. But to move that track has costs, and we've budgeted that track project would be just a little bit under $300,000. And for the funding on that, we made application to the Iowa DOT, to their rail loan and grant revolving fund. And we made an application asking for a loan of $237,000 approximately, and that Burlington Junction would then do the 20% match on there for $59,253. And we thank the council for its supportive letter to that application. It's always good to see that partnership there. We were successful in receiving a loan award of $228,000 towards that project. That is a 0% interest loan that would be payable back over 10 years once the project is built. And then, any balance beyond that Burlington Junction would be, as it's structured right now, responsible for that amount. We would probably look at building this spur next year, in 2021, and so I would probably see the first loan payment due. What I've seen in the past is it's normally once a year payment to the DOT, not till, like, January of 2023. And so, this is, the other ask that I have of the council to consider tonight a little bit, is in recognizing the cost savings in building a single floodgate versus a double floodgate, having single crossings without, and not having double crossings, and gaining, I don't know if it's a half acre, but gaining some developable space right here along by the auditorium when that track won't be there. It won't be a huge amount of space, but it'll be some. It'll let you move that way, a little bit further that direction. And so, for moving the track and recognizing these other cost savings, and there are also safety benefits to having single track crossings versus double track, although recognizing these aren't through streets here. Whether the council would consider some financial assistance in the range of $200,000 to $250,000, that's an amount for you to think about. What's most important in the short term would be you being agreeable to the easement, and then for you to think about what savings you have on building the floodgate structure with a single track would have, and the additional land space that you would have. I realize that this is a, as it is for all communities right now, a difficult financial time, with not a lot of extra budget money around. And so, what I'd have you think about is, if you think it's worth making that investment, because we're gonna move the track, and we're gonna make that investment. And if, thinking about contributing to that, if it was some amount over a period of years in the future. I'm not here saying we need to open up the checkbook today and write a check for that, when, you know, you've got five ways to spend every dollar, right now, anyway. But I think it does create value to the riverfront and the city that way, and so it's worth thinking about helping us to offset some of those costs. We lined up the funding to go ahead and do it, but we think that there's benefits to the city there, and would have you think about that, what an amount, you know, could be that you'd be willing to offer, and maybe over a period of time. And the final thing that we'll need to work out are the, this may be something more along the lines of, Nick and I have discussions about, you know, the operating agreement, who's going to maintain, you know, the structure itself. We are providing, right now, we've met with engineers and worked out a plan so that we can keep operating through this time of building. We are going to be supplying the track for the part of that building project, especially the heavy rail that's going to sit right on the floodgate portion itself. So, but who's going to maintain the structure going forward, the operation agreements, as far as, you know, whether it'll be open and closed. Ideally, and I think we've tried to work this out, so that all three gates, the existing levee gate that's up north of the Marina, the new north gate that's being built, and the south gate, will all be at roughly elevations that can be open and closed at the same time, which will, I think, operationally, just be a lot easier for everybody going forward. So, those are, you know, that's what our plan is. That's what the benefits we see, you know, we need with the city, the easement. We'd like you to think about the contribution, what that might be worth for you, and then work on the operation plans. I've asked to be on the same meeting on the 30th of this month, so that if you had specific questions, I could try to gather, you know, more information on that together, and bring that back and share that with you later this month. So, that's kind of what our plan is, and we'll see what questions you might have about that.
So, I just wanted to make sure I understand the asks correctly. So, you would like the easement, which at first glance, I don't see any problem with. But then the next ask is for the $250,000 to invest into the removal of the existing track?
No, what we have budgeted, just under $300,000, would be for us to remove the track and build it again.
Okay.
And so, you know, it's sort of but for the flood protection project that you're doing, which we're gonna see benefits from too, because I think operationally, when you put the HESCOs, it's easy to put the HESCOs up, it's hard to take them down. And having the floodgates there benefit us operationally going forward. But if you were not doing that project, we would not necessarily move our passing track. And so, we are incurring these costs that we might not incur otherwise. And so, that's our basis for asking you to think about some compensation back for that. Now, admittedly, when we get it moved up there, it'll be a better track for us, because it won't be cut by street crossings, it'll be more contiguous, so we can store more rail cars up there.
Sure.
It'll be out of the, we don't tend to store a lot of rail cars down here right now, because it just, it just sort of interferes with things we don't want. It's easier for people to climb on cars, and it's not as safe up there. It's more out of the, you can't protect against everything. But it's more out of the way up there. So, if, you know, if you weren't doing this project, we probably wouldn't be hopping in to spend this money right now to do that. But you are, and, you know, it benefits us both, but we're incurring these costs now that we might not be, might not be doing now otherwise.
Yeah, I remember we had a discussion with Mr. Frenel earlier. In fact, he just texted me, and there is a substantial savings to the city for building the single floodgates versus doubles. So, that, I remember us talking about $100,000 to $200,000 that might be needed from the city to offset that, not to make you whole, but to try to offset your costs. So, I think that's within the realm of what we were looking at.
Right. And we're not, I'm not here to ask you to pay for every nickel that we spend doing that, because it's a better situation for us when we're done too. But you're gaining some.
He wouldn't be doing it right now if it wasn't for the flood.
And I think I'd be okay in sharing in those savings.
Right.
But I'd really like to know what that number is. I don't just want a range. I'd like to know what we save by going, doing one versus the other, and try to take that number and figure out what that sharing arrangement should look like.
Do you remember what that figure was, Nick? Because we've discussed it before.
There's been figures thrown around, but I haven't seen an exact number.
Leo sent me an email describing this cost savings estimate of the closures, and then the reduction for the crossings at Jefferson Street and Washington Street, which ultimately would be covered by Tiger Grant Project, which we haven't bid out yet, so we don't know exactly. $177,000 in the savings. The one thing that I would say is, is the Tiger Grant plans are predicated on the idea that the rail cross, that extra rail line would not be there, so there would have to be some alterations to the plans, should that rail not be moved. So, there's value there. I don't know how you monetarily figure that out. I do think the safety value is a lot higher than, you know, we're kind of talking about, but like, I don't know how you put a value on that. There have been a number of times where I've seen people leaving that parking lot, and they kind of sit on the track, waiting to see what's coming, and there's a train coming towards them, and they don't know that. So, I don't, I think there is safety value in bringing that down to one line, and bringing the visual point to one, but I wouldn't know how you would figure that out monetarily.
That value's not just for the city, that's for Mr. Hoth and Shoreline.
It's for everybody involved.
Everyone involved, so.
Safer for you.
Right.
The other thing is, quite honestly, we use the space from seeing the east line gone for parking, correct?
Correct. There's expanded parking with the Tiger Grant plan right here.
We picked up parking all along here for that. So, there's value, there's definitely value to me, in my mind, to looking at this. I would like to have Jim's input on it, but he just sent me a text, he said, you know, possibly up to $200,000 would be within reason, based off the savings. But we would need to get down and kind of hammer it to see. That's why if you bring it back in 30 days.
Put more pencil to paper and figure those numbers out before I just threw a number out, but I definitely would be okay. I would be okay with sharing those savings.
Well, we appreciate that. And just to be clear, the south rail gate was always going to be a single gate, before you had it going across. There was never going to be a double gate here on the south, so then we're only, we're talking on the north one up there, where we're reducing it from two to one. And for all practical purposes right now, that switch is, because we took it out at High Street, we were trying to avoid the spring plug that didn't happen this year, thank you, whoever was in charge of that. That line is, yes, we could, that switch is still available, and we could put rail cars out on it today, but for practical operational purposes, we aren't using it right now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
You have a 0% loan.
Correct.
That is paid back over how long?
10-year period.
10-year period?
Right.
So, when we, so let's say we get, next March, April, we build this track, whatever our, when our invoices come in, we submit those to the state, and they will reimburse us 80% for what comes, what we submit to them, and then we pay, we just pay 20% out of pocket for that. And they will do that up to the, up to the $228,000 mark. If the project is more expensive than that, then that's just on us at that, on us at that point.
And you said it started, the payment started then in 2023?
Yeah, I would think that the first loan payment would probably not be till 2023, not till after the project's built, the DOT's looked at it and signed off on it. And right now, I, we just have our award letter from the state. We've not signed the, the next step is an agreement to sign with the DOT that'll set out the timeline. Basically, it kind of gives you a two-year timeline to use the money to get it built. So, if we had flooding situations next spring, that's outside, we're probably not going to build it next spring. It could be, they won't, the DOT will not seek to recoup any of the loan money until it's spent and the project's done. So, the clock doesn't start running until it's built.
So, Jim's home, not feeling well tonight, so he just texted me. So, we're getting his opinion.
Right.
Okay. He said, "I think the $200,000 makes sense. It's our higher end, your lower end, it's kind of in the middle. But it will be a general fund, is what we're looking at, paying it. And, you know, whatever we pay would be all at once. We wouldn't get caught up in the terms of your loan, that's your business." So, I would say, unless, you know, unless anybody else has any questions, I would say we're gonna take a hard look at that number, and we'll get you an answer shortly.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any?
The one thing that I would maybe mention is, you talked about the easement area up north. I wonder if it wouldn't be beneficial to, along the whole area where the rail is on city-granted property from the feds, if it wouldn't make sense to just rework that whole easement area, upon completion of where the new track lines would make sense?
My idea is, because railroad property is always sort of tricky to figure out where the lines were from 100 years ago, is I basically asked Klinger to survey the whole, that grassy strip between the rail and the wall there, and ask the city probably to grant us an easement in that whole area. It may be over places that we already have easement ownership, but it would make sure that it was all covered.
And so, I guess what I was at, what I spoke with the city attorney about was whether or not we construct an easement for the whole section from the floodgate essentially south to your connection at BNSF, if it would make sense to write a new easement for the full area, and say essentially that we're revoking the other easement. That, I don't know if anybody even has a physical copy of that easement, when the feds granted that land over to the city.
Right.
But I just didn't know, from a legal perspective, if you thought that that made sense.
It might make sense to relook at that, to, because we'll, I mean, under this scenario, we're not going to hold you up on any projects, you know, expanding parking that way, but technically, we would still have an easement where the parking's going. You know, it would be probably a decent cleanup item to do. I think it would maybe be kind of a next step to take, depending on how quickly that could all be surveyed. But we could visit more and visit with the city attorney, because I've been trying to get my head around it, too, the best way to, the best way to do this.
But I think as council, none of us have a problem with the easement, is that correct?
I don't have a problem with the easement.
Linda?
I'm good. I'm good with the easement.
But I'd rather work out the number.
Yeah, well, I think we should have Jim here for that, on that.
Quick question. So, the ground that the rail sits on, who's that owned by?
Well, this depends where you're at on it. This ground, running along the auditorium here, I really think that we have in this area an easement. And so, I don't know.
But is it owned by the city of Burlington?
Maybe owned by the city of Burlington.
Okay, and you carry an easement on there?
From what I've understood about the way the process was done, that the federal government owned the land prior to, and the predecessor rail company would have had easement over top of that area, and then the land was all granted to the city of Burlington. And I assume that that easement carried forward with it, as now the landowner of that area, but the easement's still in place.
Okay.
So, ultimately, the rail's ownership through easement is of that area.
Yeah, so we acquired our interests and what we had out of the Rock Island bankruptcy. And so, what the Rock Island had, and whoever they took it from prior, is how we came to acquire it. But it could be, we could rework that.
That way, we actually have a physical document to rely on, and not just this open conversation. I mean, not that we don't, you and I here can't understand where that area is, but in 100 years, when they're having another conversation, there's actual physical document that's recorded at the recorder's office.
Right. I think that would be a worthwhile thing to look at.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll dig into the numbers, and we'll get back to you.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Okay, first up, we're gonna, on the proposed regular agenda for November 16th, 2020, Steph A. sent you a text, "People are complaining that they can't hear us over the music on Channel 17. I'm sure that's nothing we can do anything about. It's media com?" Okay. The first is a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property, parcel number 16-17-228043, located south of property locally known as 707 Shakka Can Drive, City Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisler?
This is the property we discussed last Monday, of revoking the sale to the former property owner on Black Hawk Drive. They did not desire to own it any longer. It's a small rectangular sheet, piece of property from when we acquired the Park Beat Care Center, that was kind of left over, that hung out there. The property owner in the middle, that's currently building a house at 707 Shakka Can Drive, had interest in taking it over. City has no interest in it, it's just a liability. They would basically just maintain it. It's kind of a hillside, it's not a real use to anyone, but prior to them selling the property, we'd like to get it in their hands, so that they could transfer the house and this land. So, just selling it for a dollar, similar to what we sold it for previously, just to get rid of the liability. It would have went to this property originally, if the other owner hadn't expressed interest at the time. So, there is a sanitary sewer easement over it, and we'd recommend transferring it to that owner.
So, we're not anticipating auctioning this?
No, it's too small to actually build on it, it has no lot frontage, so it can only go to either the owner to the north or the south, and the south doesn't want it, so.
Okay. Any questions, guys? All right, thank you, Eric. Proposed consent agenda is next, November 16th, 2020. First up would be resolution approving nuisance payments for various properties. Did anybody see anything of concern there? Next up is a resolution approving final acceptance of final payment and release retention monies for the 2020 Central Avenue HMA resurfacing project. Mr. McGregor?
This resolution would close out the project on Central, that Norris Asphalt Paving had the contract on it. It would approve final payment of $45,776, and then release retention monies after 30 days in the amount of $42,925. The original contract for this project was bid out at $792.85 and $851. It had a quantity adjustment of $65,654, which is the full-depth patching. We ran into a little bit more patching work than we had, kind of, when you draw out the plans, and you estimate what kind of amount that is. So, that's the reason why that increases there. The total as-built costs is $858,505. And this is out of the RRNR, the Resurfacing and Reconstruction Rehab Program, General Obligation Fund. So, it's good to see this project happen. I think it was a pretty welcomed change to that whole corridor there. So, they did a pretty good job with the work. So, uh, they did a pretty good job with the work, so.
It is very smooth, I will say that. Any questions for Nick on that one? Comments? Okay, number three, resolution to obligating funds for the Burlington Crossing TIFF rebate sub-fund of City Urban's renewal tax refund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. Stephanie, you made the long walk.
Yes. So the next, um, four resolutions are all about our annual appropriations we have with our TIFF development agreements that we already have in place. Um, basically, I just got the estimated, um, tax revenues last week from the auditor's office. So those estimates are in the resolution now. What that means is we cannot rebate any more tax dollars than what you've, what you will approve tonight. This will go on my, um, Des Moines County, um, report that's due December first, so they know how much TIFF funds we're drawing down for these rebate agreements. But these are actually for next fiscal year, FY twenty-two.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions on that?
No.
You want to, and number four, I'll read that, we'll just go through these, Stephanie, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. Number four would be resolution obligating funds for the Greater Burlington Partnership TIFF rebate sub-fund of the City's urban renewal tax refund for approch- appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. Any, any comments on that one? Okay.
No.
Number five is a resolution obligating funds for the Park West LLC TIFF rebate sub-fund of the City's urban renewal tax refund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding final year. Any questions on that one? And number six is a resolution obligating funds for the Weingard TIFF rebate sub-fund of the City's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding final year. Any questions on that one? Number seven, resolution of authorizing internal loan from the general fund to the tax increment refund. Revenue fund, I'm sorry, sorry.
So this resolution approves that, um, we estimate we spend about twenty thousand dollars to keep up our urban renewal, the annual, um, fees that we have for attorneys, Eric's time, Jim's time. So it's just approving that internal loan, that we can move the money from TIFF, we'll certify it as debt on my twelve-one report to the county also, and then we'll transfer it to the general fund to cover those fees.
Okay. Any questions, gang?
I'm good.
Uh, number eight is a resolution approving acknowledgement and waiver for the potential of conflict of interest. Chief Trexler?
Good evening. Oh, it's loud.
Please speak up so we can hear you.
This is just a notice from the city attorney that he represents both the city of Burlington and Lee County in that agreement for ambulance billing that, that he worked on. Um, I'll have the actual agreement for the first meeting in December, so. It's been a very cordial relationship with Lee County, so we both got what we wanted in the contract, so. If there would ever be an issue, then Patrick would have to bow out, we'd have to get a different attorney, but I don't foresee there being any issues with Lee County.
All right, any questions, gang? All right, thank you, chief. Uh, number nine, resolution for approving engineering services for agreement for long-term control plan.
The resolution in front of you would approve a contract with Veenstring Kim, uh, and a, with a not-to-exceed, uh, contract of thirty-four thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-four dollars. Uh, so the long-term control plan is a document that the EPA and Iowa DNR use to, uh, show how a city is going to gain compliance uh, with its consent decree, uh, specifically geared towards, uh, combined sewers, uh, and the overflows. Uh, as you know, we've been in discussion, uh, with the Iowa DNR about renegotiating our consent order. Uh, we've been working with Dustin Miller, who I, I think he still works for Nymaster, but I'm not quite sure. I know he has another job too. Uh, and then we've been working with V and K to, to help take the integrated management plan that we kind of started with the EPA and then ultimately finished up, uh, with the help of Veenstring Kim. Uh, so this, we didn't really know where we were with the Iowa DNR. We had a recent conversation with them where they spelled out, they wanted us to lay out the new long-term control plan to give them an idea on how we would achieve compliance with an updated presumptive approach, uh, consent order. So we didn't really know the steps prior to that they were wanting us to take to get that consent order renegotiated. So the long-term control plan essentially will, if we lay, we lay out this proposed plan, it will ultimately help us renegotiate to get a consent order, uh, you know, with a different compliance schedule. Uh, you know, we're hoping it's a little bit different than I think the DNR is kind of set in their plan set to try and give us, so. This was just one of the pieces of the puzzle. Unfortunately, anytime you hear long-term control plan, it, it's a controlling document that the DNR uses. So, uh, there is a purpose and a value behind it. So, uh, I recommend going forward with it, especially with the people that helped us get to this point on that.
Okay, any questions, gang? Um, number ten, it'd be a resolution approving annual urban renewal report. Ms. Stupair, please.
Okay, this is the annual urban renewal report that's due to the state by December first. This is actually looking back at fiscal year twenty. It just recaps the TIFF revenues we got in, um, what debt payments we made, what project it goes to. So that's the detail, the report that's attached. It'll be electronically filed before December first, wants you to approve it next week.
Okay. Um, any questions? Nope. Seeing none, and number eleven, resolution approving annual financial report.
So this again is another report that's required by the state. Um, it will be published in the paper next Tuesday, which is the requirement. You guys will approve it Monday night, it'll be in the paper on Tuesday, then I will get it filed to the state by twelve-one. Um, this basically is just recapping everything that happened in the fiscal year twenty.
Okay, questions? Uh, number twelve, we're gonna, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, number twelve, we're gonna set a date for a public hearing, December seventh, twenty twenty, and that will be a consideration of an ordinance amending the chapter eighty-one, all-terrain vehicles and some snowmobiles for Burlington Municipal Code. Chief Klein?
Good evening, council. Uh, this would be a follow-up to the presentation that I had the previous work session where the council that was present at that time had asked me to do a little bit of additional seeking as to what we could add in our current code to allow ATVs, UTVs, uh, to be utilized in city streets specifically for snow removal. Couple of changes to it, uh, some verbiage changes, simply adding, uh, the definition of what a UTV is or an off-road vehicle is under eighty-one oh-two sub-three. Uh, the largest change that you'll notice is in eighty-one point oh-four, uh, sub-one. Uh, UTVs and snowmobiles may only be operated on city streets that are subject to a speed limit of thirty-five or less. And then the second addition to that would be sub-two B, where it refers specifically to snow removal and, uh, indicates where that the ATVs and UTVs can be used, specifically private driveway sidewalks and private parking lots. Also adding that there has to be a functioning blader or snowblower on the vehicle at all times. Uh, outside of that, again, it's just some small verbiage changes, but that is the meat and potatoes of it.
Okay. Any questions, guys? Thank you. Appreciate it, chief. Thanks for the good work. All right, move on to our, the discussion item tonight, we have two of them, uh, city manager search, Hinson Consulting.
Hi, everybody, glad to be with you, I'm Brent Hinson. So, uh, thanks for, uh, selecting, uh, my firm to assist you with the city manager search. Uh, really looking forward to it. I, uh, as I mentioned in the, um, proposal, uh, quite a bit of experience with the city of Burlington, having grown up in Des Moines County here and, and, uh, really looking forward to, uh, have an opportunity to help you folks find the next, uh, manager to help lead this city. So I will be joined, uh, later on this week, uh, we're proposing to do the one-on-one meetings with, um, elected officials and staff. And, um, that will be, uh, Mark Jackson, my fellow consultant, will be joining me for that. Um, so I do have a handout that I had Nick distribute, uh, beforehand here. That's just for you to take a look at, that's our questionnaire, uh, for the one-on-one meetings. Uh, just to give you an advance idea of what we're wanting to talk about. Uh, we generally allow twenty to thirty minutes, uh, for those meetings. And, um, essentially, we can talk to whoever you want us to talk to. Um, you know, usually it's, it's limited to mayor, council, staff. Um, we have occasionally had somebody say, hey, we really want you to talk with the chamber director or talk with, uh, you know, talk with, uh, you know, grow greater Burlington, or, you know, whatever it may be. Uh, we can certainly work that in, uh, however you guys would like to see it, um, in terms of the one-on-ones. We've allowed really plenty of time, uh, to do that, um, I believe, cause Mark and I will both, uh, Mark Jackson and I will both be doing sessions, so we'll split them basically fifty-fifty. Um, we'll be here from, uh, I believe it ended up being two to eight on, uh, Thursday and then, uh, nine to one that next day on Friday. So hopefully we'll be able to catch everybody that kind of has a nine to five that you can't easily get out of, so we can do those people in the evening. But then it's definitely, um, what we've found is it's, it's, for this, for the staff, it's much preferred to have it during the day, uh, if possible, so. Uh, any questions as on that? As far as, you know, that's new information to you this time. It's really just to, to introduce you to the idea of what we're talking about doing, allow you to digest that a little bit, and then we'll talk in a lot more detail, uh, one-on-one with you, um, here later this week. Any questions as far as that went?
Questions, guys? So we'll need to get with you and, and get our appointments set.
So Stephanie is the master schedule person.
She generally is.
Yes, if you, if you think you have an appointment and you haven't talked to Stephanie, you do not have an appointment. So that is how we're doing it. Um, so she does also have, um, the Word doc version of the questionnaire. Some people just like to have the Word doc, they, you know, to type in your answers and have it a little neater and cleaner. You don't have to do anything in advance, uh, you're, some people, some people like to do that, to kind of have all their answers stated out in advance and, and that's perfectly fine. Or if you just wanna come with a blank questionnaire and you've reviewed it once and, you know, you're ready to talk, we can do it that way as well. You know, we'll, we'll either take notes while you're, while you're talking, or if you wanna hand us the questionnaire and then we don't have to take as many notes, that's, that's fine too.
Okay. You know, Ms., I think Mr. Frenow, first of all, I know he's watching, so I know you're enjoying being at home and watching the meeting, and he asked if you were going to apply. Good local boy, would be, would be a good fit for a community, you thought?
Yeah, well, there would be a definite conflict of interest with me taking this job as a consultant and then throwing my hat in the ring, so. I, I, I think that is forestalled as a, as an opportunity, but definitely will do everything I can to help you be successful.
I'm just trying to make Jim happy, that's all.
Absolutely, I'm sure he has made a hundred snide comments to himself, if not to you, uh, during this presentation thus far, so, yep.
All right, so does anybody have any questions for Ms. Hinson?
So I, I just wanna clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
So we go ahead and, and fill this when we come to our appointment with you.
It is up to you.
Okay.
So we are providing in advance, you have a paper copy. If you would like it electronically, just let Stephanie know and she can send you the Word doc. Um, or you can just show up at the meeting and we can just talk and I'll take notes.
Okay.
It's however you wanna do it.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
I definitely think, uh, Stephanie, as we go forward, probably wanna, there's some people I'm sure we want to have, uh, speak, and that would be the chamber director probably, and along with some others. So we'll put together a list of that as well.
Absolutely, and, and really, as far as that goes, that's why we usually put it in the hands of a, a trusted staff person, because then basically they can just determine, you know, work with the, the mayor, work with the city, uh, city manager and determine who else needs to be talked to, and, uh, we'll incorporate that input. Um, you know, really, really what we're doing right now is, you know, preliminary work, of course. We're trying to put together a position profile, uh, to use as an advertising document that's really going to represent what, where the city of Burlington is and, and where you wanna be in the future, uh, the qualities that we're looking for in the new city manager, uh, et cetera. And so we just really wanna make sure that we hit that nail right on the head. And the way that we do that is by getting, you know, good input from all of you folks. And, uh, you know, you're the experts on your community. You know, we're here to, to help you be successful, but you're the experts, so.
Okay, well, it's really important, so we're gonna do our best.
Yeah, absolutely, no, it's a, it's a very, very important decision for you, uh, going forward, who you select. Okay, so, uh, as far, so that's kind of the, the one-on-one, uh, sessions, uh, aspect and that we'll be, uh, working on here later this week. Um, just wanted to kind of run you through, I had provided a memo, and I'm not sure whether you guys, uh, got the, from November first, I had sent a memo to Jim, uh, just to kind of lay out, uh, here's, here's what I see at this point in the process. I don't know if you guys, have you guys seen that at all? And if not, that's okay.
Have not, is it?
Okay, that's fine. So I've just got some main points here that I wanted to go over with you. So, uh, schedule-wise, um, there's a couple of critical dates. Most of them coincide with your, either your regular meetings or your work sessions, but there are a couple of dates that I wanna kind of float past you guys to make sure that you're checking your schedules so that we can get everybody here. You know, that's, cause, cause obviously it's a, it's a better process if, uh, everybody can be involved every step of the way. We don't wanna have to, you know, reschedule as we get further into the process. Right now, there, there's some fluidity to it, but that won't stay for long.
Okay.
So, um, so as far as, you know, kind of the critical dates, of course, we've got this coming Thursday, Friday, where we just need a half hour of your time during that for the one-on-ones. Uh, that's a critical kind of timeline thing. Uh, we are proposing, uh, so for, when we get the applications in and we're ready to, uh, do the interviews of semifinalists. Basically, the way we have proposed this is, we will come to you at your January eleventh, uh, work, work session, and we will have a closed session where we will, uh, in advance, get closed session sign-offs from anybody that's gonna be discussed and then give the chance for the council to cut down to semifinalists. We would then have those semifinalist interviews later that week, on that Thursday, the fourteenth. So that is a little bit unusual date, uh, for you guys in, in your council calendar. Um, so if you can take a look at that, of course, that's a, you know, that's a, getting into a busy time of year anyway, uh, because you'll be having budget, budget sessions, uh, and et cetera. Um, but January fourteenth is a Thursday, and, and basically, in order to really do the virtual interviews right, um, you know, you're allowing something, you wanna allow at least probably a half hour per candidate, um, probably doing it in something like a, a forty-minute block, so there's a little bit of flex. If, if somebody goes a little bit overtime, that doesn't mess up the whole schedule. Um, and usually, we're looking at something like, um, seven or eight candidates at least. It just is gonna depend on, on what the candidate pool is, the applicant pool. Uh, we've done as many as ten, that's a lot, in one night. Um, but, uh, you know, probably something like seven to eight candidates, uh, that you'd take a look at as semifinalists. Um, so you start doing the math on that, and, I mean, eight candidates is gonna be over four hours. You know, that's probably gonna be something like, uh, you know, four and a half, uh, hours. So we would start, um, you know, probably something like four o'clock or four-thirty on that, uh, Thursday and just go till we're done, um, to, to do that. So that's something, you know, it's a little bit down the road, but we just wanna give you a reasonable understanding and expectation. And I, and I think there's a lot of value, even though it's a very long day, uh, that is a, I, I think there's a value to taking a look at all the candidates side by side, rather than we do a few candidates this day and then we do a few candidates this day, and it just kind of strings it out, and then it's hard to remember. And, you know, sometimes you end up favoring candidates that were early on, just because they were early on and made that good impression, or sometimes you favor candidates that were later on because they're the most fresh in your memory, you know, and, and you just wanna make sure that you're getting that right, right blend. And so then the goal from that would be, uh, you know, once those virtual interviews would be done, essentially at the end of that, we have discussion and determine, you know, three to four, uh, finalists to invite, um, for interviews. I would, I would never do less than three, I tend to think four is a good number, but it really just depends on what your candidate pool is and kind of where the council's at on it. So, so that's kind of what we're looking at, and then that, those, uh, in-person interviews are proposed for January twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Um, usually the way that that schedule ends up shaping up, I haven't put together a proposed schedule yet. The council involvement usually ends up being a public reception on Friday night and then basically like eight to two on Saturday. Um, is probably about your commitment that you'd expect, um, for that process. Cause basically, usually what we do is we kind of do the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, type of welcome, you know, and tour of the community and, you know, show them all the good stuff that's happened, show them, you know, show them the challenges, uh, that are ahead, et cetera. Just try to give them a good, a good, uh, understanding of. Just try to give them a good, a good understanding of the community and what you guys are trying to accomplish, and hopefully a, a positive impression. And then basically, we do a, a public reception following that, is, is pretty typical.
Okay.
So, so those are kind of, you know, just take a, make sure that you've got, build in whatever flexibility you can for that Thursday, the 14th, and then also the 29th and 30th, so.
Okay.
So that's kind of schedule-wise, kind of things for you guys to anticipate. As far as, and we talked a little bit about this with maybe involving, you know, the chamber, involving some others, just be thinking, and, and this is something we can talk about the next time I'm here, citizen involvement. You know, every, every town does it differently, you know, there's processes where we have basically just the public reception, and that's all there is for citizen involvement. We've had processes where we've got a citizen panel, you know, we have a community panel that participates in the interviews. We've got processes where we have, you know, a public input session that takes place at one of the council meetings that we're here for, you know, for, you know, kind of what are we looking for in a city manager? There's a variety of ways to do it, as far as that goes. We could do a, we could do a survey, you know, there's, there's, there's just a variety of ways that we could do it, but we are going to listen to you guys as far as what you would like to see for citizen involvement with the process.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? The only one I have is Brett, so how do you think we're going to do?
I think pretty well, so.
I mean, I, I think that's a fair question.
Yeah.
We're asking you to fill this, this spot, whether we think there's going to be some very viable candidates out there.
Yep, and so it really depends, you know, of course, we have noticed some hesitancy with candidates, potential candidates with, you know, COVID in the world we're living in, of making a move during these times, especially if they've got a good job right I tend to think that we're going to attract similar candidates to what Burlington has in the past, where I think you're going to get, you know, obviously Jim came here from a smaller community. I think that there's, you know, we've got, you know, good potential there of some smaller, you know, 5,000, you know, communities of 5,000 and up potentially. I think that we, we already know and we're in touch, and that's, and that's kind of part of, part of what we do in a little bit of our sales pitch, is that we've got this network of people throughout the state and really the region that we will make contact with. We're not just going to wait for applications to come in, we're going to literally, you know, Mark Jackson that's, that's helping on this search, will literally call like 80 people that we think are qualified and, and would be good for the position, and just have a chat with them. So we feel like that really helps us, you know, get that notice of, you know, and, and interest. We really think that when we're on the eastern side of the state, and of course you guys are a border community, so it's even more so, when we're on the eastern part of the state, Iowa is a way better state to be in city government than Illinois is, and so we feel like we've got the potential to attract really quality candidates, maybe from like the Quad City area, some of the other outlying Illinois metro, you know, downstate Illinois metro areas. So we'll really target our, our advertising around that as well, you know, so we're, we're really going to try for Iowa candidates, but basically we feel like the sweet spot is Iowa candidates, downstate Illinois, and then really St. Louis area. You know, those are, those are going to be, or people, you know, you, of course, you're always looking for that person that has, you know, they grew up in Burlington and they remember it fondly, and they've had, you know, 20 years of experience somewhere else, and you get a chance to bring them back. You know, that's, that's kind of your, your, potentially a dream candidate, and, and we may get a couple of those, we'll just have to see.
I just wanted to get it out there so the people watching could, could see what you're, what you thought might happen.
Yep, yep, and, and really what you're, what you're dealing with a little bit when you're a city the size of Burlington is, you're going to deal with either, you know, there, there will be candidates that may be kind of a little less experienced but solid and maybe making a jump in terms of city size. What you tend to get in your candidates that are, you know, have, have experience in communities of 20,000 plus, as they've probably got a termination or two on their, on their record, doesn't mean they're bad managers and doesn't mean they wouldn't be a great fit. It's just the reality that, you know, we.
Reality of the job.
Exactly, we dealt with that when we did our, our, and, and that is not an unusual thing in city management, you know, to have a, especially you get to this size of community to have a termination or two on your record. So, you know, that's something, obviously, we'll just kind of see how that goes when we, when we get to that point, and, and kind of what the attitude and thoughts of the council are.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Questions, any other questions? Thank you.
I just have a.
Oh, wait.
I have an unusual question. So what are the most common reasons that a manager would be terminated?
Yeah, I mean, usually you're just talking, you know, changes in council and changes in priority. You know, obviously, the, the city manager is a lot of times the tip of the spear as far as implementation of council policies, and if there's differences of opinion on whether those policies should have been implemented, a lot of time the city, a lot of times the city manager is the fall guy. When, you know, if there's a changeover in council majority, that, that can really happen. We don't see it in Iowa thankfully, because we're nonpartisan in our elections. You'd even see, you know, there's a search that we're doing right now where we've got one candidate that was terminated because he was, came in with a Republican majority and there was a switchover to a Democratic majority, I think, something like that.
Ouch!
Thank goodness we don't have that in Iowa.
Yeah.
It's, it's really pretty good, clean and, and nonpartisan government here, and, and we're pretty lucky for that.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious.
You bet, you bet, yeah, it can vary, and, and if we have a candidate that has had those circumstances, we really dig into it. You know, the good thing is that there's a public record on it, and we can dig into that public record. We can also talk with, you know, even ask the candidate, hey, can you, can you give us an explanation of, of what happened here? And maybe even, you know, in some cases, maybe even ask them, hey, give us a reference or two that's going to be able to speak to that. You know, things happen in city management, you know, in this profession, it's, it's, you know, like I said, it's not, there's, I've known some very, very good managers that have had a termination on their, on their record, and they've still been able to go and be successful in other communities. I think you just judge them on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
So.
One last thing, I promise, because I keep coming up with one last thing. How do you think our, we've had a discussion in the past about our salary range.
Yep.
Are we okay there? Does it kind of impact our con, our candidates?
We, we will do, before we get to the final approval of the position profile, we will examine that, we've got the, kind of the raw numbers, but haven't put the salary comparison together yet.
Okay.
To take a look at, you know, making sure that, you know, compared to those other, you know, centers of 25,000 people around the state, that you're good in terms of comparable salary. We'll also take a look and, and throw in a few that may not be as directly comparable as say like Marshall Town or, or Muscatine. You know, we may throw a few additional in there just to kind of give you guys, you know, the proper perspective, and then we'll base the salary range off, off your input. But, but certainly, you know, I know that, just, just a little bit, I know, I think you're, I think you're generally in the right range at the current time, but we'll, we'll have to take a look at what that range, actual advertising range is.
And I realize those are all hard questions to just respond to without being fully into it, but appreciate your answers on that.
You bet, you bet. Nope, sounds good, sounds good.
Anything else?
So, so we will be working on, you know, just kind of additional items I've got here. We will be working on that position profile, I've gotten a bunch of information from Stephanie on that, starting to put that together. Would love to have any input you guys have for, for what needs to be included in that. I may have just a very rough draft ready here for when I do the one-on-ones, so if I do have that ready, then I'll, I'll let you guys take a look at that, otherwise it's very easy for me to send you one from a past search, just so you can see kind of what that looks like and, and what we're trying to do. You know, we're not, we're not trying to give the candidates every piece of information on Burlington, they need to do their research if they're a serious candidate.
Sure.
But we want to give them, it's a marketing piece, and we're trying to, to whet their interest in, in the position, and, and hopefully they'll really dig into it and find that it's a, something good for them to pursue. So that's position profile, we'll be working on that, and then basically, kind of our deadline for input on that is December 2nd, because that's when we'll be finalizing that, and then that would come. Basically, our, our schedule is the December 7th meeting, we would ask for council consideration of that position profile and the advertising plan, and then we go out on December 8th and start advertising.
Okay.
So that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at as far as that goes. Wage and benefit package, you know, I've reviewed Jim's contract, I've reviewed, you know, some of your benefit information that Stephanie sent me. You know, I think you've got a very good wage and benefit package for the manager. Really, the only thing that I expect to run into is a possible issue, and it, and again, it's depending on what your candidate pool is, they may say, they may think that the severance, severance length is not long enough, you know, because Jim has six months severance pay and benefits if he's terminated without cause. I would say for communities Burlington's size, it's probably more like nine to 12 is the typical. So that could be something that we run into as, as we go, and we can talk about that, and, and obviously if there's a, you know, if the council just really feels like there's no movement there, six months is the max, then, then we'll, we'll go forward with that with the negotiation, but it could, it could impact, as far as that goes, a candidate's willingness, because that is typically, you know, that's often the hot issue for council, and it's often the hot issue for candidates on the other side as far as severance pay. If, if, if something like that were to come about, which obviously you hope it never does.
Sure.
Both sides hope it never does. And then kind of the last thing that I've really got on my agenda to talk with you about is, is confidentiality and making sure that we understand, so that we can relay to the candidates what, what the expectation of confidentiality is. Usually, I, here, here's what I would say would be a proposed approach. A proposed approach would be, we release the names of the candidates and some basic biographical information on them when they're, you know, the week that they're coming to interview for final interviews. Typically, that's what candidates are going to want, you know, that they, they, you know, because they've got jobs elsewhere, they don't want to, you know, get in hot, hot water because they've applied in, in Burlington. Typically, I would, I would say that it would be a standard thing to expect by the time that you're interviewing and coming for final interviews in another community, you've informed your mayor and council in your current city. So I think it's realistic, and you're, you're, you're trying to balance, you know, kind of the public right to know with the confidentiality for the applicants. And typically, I would say, you know, candidates are going to expect confidentiality in terms of, you know, the application materials, you know, those types of things. Often, you know, with this being a bigger city, I think it would be reasonable to expect that the, you know, the paper or radio station or others may want to do, may want to interview the candidates, like do a little, you know, short interview with them for the paper, you know, in the week up to. They can decide whether they want to participate in that or not, but I, I don't see any issue with that. Just something for you guys to consider as we get closer, and obviously, at this point, we don't have any applicants, you know, hopefully starting December 8th, those will start rolling in.
That's hope.
So, so we're really going to need, in the next few weeks, kind of some council direction on that, because we have seen before where we had, you know, there was one search we did where we had this upfront discussion with the council, and they said, nope, we don't want to release any information, we'll have a public reception, the public can find out, you know, at the reception, if they show up at the reception, who the candidates are. And then they got pressure from the media after that, and they kind of reversed course, and it cost us one of the finalists, one of the finalists dropped out because they didn't want their information released. And so, we don't want to end up in that situation, so I think that the, the main thing is that we're consistent, you know, the, the, the council just makes a call and just says, this is, this is how we're going to proceed, and, and that is what it is. And so if, if that is, you know, I would never recommend it, but if that is, hey, we're going to, you know, post your, all your application materials on our website, you know, as soon as you apply, you know, then I guess that's the direction we apply, you know, supply back to the candidates. You know, but, like I said, I think the, I think the recommended and the standard would be, you know, you, you want that public right to know satisfied, but I think you, the way you satisfy that reasonably is, you know, you just, a week, a week in advance, you, you let the candidates know that you're going to do a, you're going to do a media release, it's going to include who they are, maybe what their current position is, and maybe some past cities they've worked in, and then, you know, if the media wants contact information, that you're going to supply their contact information for follow-up.
Yeah, I would, I would say that that would be a reasonable expectation, and quite honestly, that's why we hired your firm, is to help guide us through this process, so we need to listen when you give us good advice.
Okay.
All right, anything else, gang? Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, everybody for listening, I didn't see anybody dozing off, I wasn't looking to overhear that.
Oh, they were asleep.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up would be the Five-Year Streets Plan, Nick, Road Plan, sorry.
I'll try and make this as concise as possible, but I could see several tangents happening while I give this presentation, so it may be a little while when we go through this. I gave you printouts of the presentation, I think Eric is maybe going to hook this up. Anyway, we will go through the background information of the Five-Year Road Plan, then we'll go through the 22, or fiscal year 22 through 26 plans, showing some alternatives in there, and then I will also address the Seal Coat conversion that came from your goal-setting process. The first couple slides, like 2013 PCI, I just want you to take note of that, and then switch to the 2015, and then you'll see the 2017, followed by the 2019. The Iowa DOT, as a part of the, through Iowa State, they drive our roads every year, and the thing I want you to take note from showing you those PCIs is to show the growth towards a bell curve, which is the, the desired look for the PCI scores, which I should, the PCI is, is the Pavement Condition, Condition Index, and I think I've addressed this a little bit before, 100 is good, 0 is bad. So you can see that we're, we're growing in the right direction by taking the, the roads that are scoring badly in PCI and at least putting, putting your bell curve in a better look. The, I also gave a map slide to show you the condition scoring of the roadways, you can see, rather lack see the, the best scores, but what I want to bring your attention to is kind of the highlighting reds and oranges and yellows that indicate kind of worse PCI scores. There are some in this, this is 2019, we have fixed some of the roads that were on this, so just take notice of that as we move forward. But we use PCI data along with the, the quality or the, the type of road that it is, so, you know, arterial roads are our main thoroughfares, Agency Division, West Avenue, Sunnyside, and then we look at collectors, roads that are a little bit less traveled but still service a lot of vehicles on a daily basis, and then residuals. When we sit down and look at the PCI scoring on them and see the condition that they're in, and then also understand what kind of road, or what kind of traffic they see, we try and put the ones that have a little bit more traffic, have a little higher scale, or weight on them to, to try and get them on the table sooner. So the Five-Year Road Plan, you know, we, go ahead.
There's no color on the 81 to 100, surely we have a couple of them.
I know, it's white. I, this is the problem when you have a colorblind city engineer set color scales.
Just tell me there's a.
I try and make him fix as many maps as I can, but there's only so many that you can have your eyes on and have him fix.
Moving in the right direction.
Thanks.
I shouldn't probably make fun of colorblindness, it's probably some sort of DNA lawsuit waiting to happen, but I like to rib him. I, I have attached the Five-Year Road Plan, or four of the five years, for the 22 through 26 Road Plan. You will notice, I'll go through each one of these years, I didn't include the fifth year because we're going to discuss kind of the options. Ultimately, it's going to come down to money and how you want to, you know, what kind of goals you want to do for that fifth year. Fiscal year 22 is, it starts in July, but we will, we're in design right now, we will likely go out to bid sometime in January, February, and construction will start sometime in April. You know, we don't borrow these monies until June, but we should be okay to carry that kind of cash flow for those first couple months. Fiscal year 22, we've talked about. Fiscal year 22, we've talked about this for a little while, is the Harrison Street reconstruction. We're also doing some sewer separation work. This is kind of the first project in town that we've tried to not just look at the roads only, to look at everything else around it. Storm sewer and sanitary, this is an area that does need sewer separation. So it's a star, I guess, with trying to reach our consent order. The one thing that has changed in the plan set as we've, we've sat down with our consult, our Stanley consultants to do this. Is the, the roadway is no longer going to go down Miller Street and then west down Dunham. It is actually going to go down South Eighth Street and then east down Dunham. We have some storm sewer flows that weren't able to be obtained with that first kind of pathway. However, we will fix another road, actually, I think Miller Street's in fairly good, good shape. And North Eighth needs some work. So I think that's a seal coat road, we'll put curb and gutter and concrete back in it. So that's actually an upgrade that really isn't talked about as far as, you know, Harrison's kind of the primary one. But then we're also putting a retention pond. We have to finalize all that with the school district, but they've been more than open to, to that work. That's a $4.8 million project. And traditionally, we've spent 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars in general obligation funds, kind of on an annual basis. And so as I get into these projects, I sent off what kind of our perceived plan was with some options for the fifth year. Off to, it's not Piper Jaffrey anymore, is it? It's Travis.
Travis, yeah.
Financial advisor.
Squire.
Yeah, it's Piper Squire. And to, to look at what this project, not only that, but then moving forward as we get into a couple of the other projects, how we can afford or what we can afford moving forward. So the other thing is, is the main street project on there with Tiger. As you know, we just bid that out. We will be rebidding that out in, in March. And kind of as we've previously discussed with the Tiger grant, we've put the max allowable bid numbers on there. It may require us to put up an additional, and we've, and Jim has addressed that with you guys, about an extra million dollars. Well, some of that portion ultimately could pay for that part of a project. So that would be road use tax that he was looking at using to pay for that. Fiscal year 23, we have the other part of the Tiger grant, which is Jefferson Street. And that is also part of that money could ultimately be needed more funding on, on that work. But then, then one of the bigger other projects is Madison slash Ninth Street. As you know, this has been the talked about project. We applied for it as an STBG grant. And we received $376,000. As we've done, so every year Jesse goes through and finds out what the bid items are and we adjust. There was a little bit of an adjustment in this quantity or in the, the dollar figure for this asphalt. We've seen a little bit of an increase there. And concrete actually has gone up some, especially with the fly ash. There's been a, a need to try and supplement that with some more expensive type material. With coal usage going down, they blamed it on coronavirus, but I don't know how that, that makes any sense. But however, the conversion to natural gas type facilities definitely could impact the, the function of fly ash and concrete, which could drive up some prices. So he's adjusted that overlay and reconstruction project to, to be reflective at $2 million. And so that we would have that STBG grant. It does involve the, the bike lanes from South Street, South to Sunset. And I wanted to, at this point, Jesse and I have sat down and went over what an alternative project would look like to. I know that there's been some people in the neighborhoods that don't like the idea of having parking removed in the bike lanes. Which the bike lanes only came because there had to be a reduction of parking. But I wanted to look at what would it cost to do a full PCC or concrete replacement from Sunset all the way up to Angular? And make it the appropriate width that would follow DOT federal guidelines for two lanes to travel with parking and then add a trail. And you see that number there estimated at $3.8 million. So you can see it's a significant jump that it takes to upgrade. Not only, I say upgrade, I think PCC is a better product, has a longer shelf life than asphalt. It takes a little longer to do, but ultimately the cost in itself isn't that much different than asphalt. But you can see what that, what that reconstruction does to that project. So I wanted to address that as an alternative. Ultimately, it's going to come down to what you can borrow. And so if that is a high priority, it affects what you're going to be able to say is your fifth year option. I think it, it, you know, there's very, variety of different alternatives you could do with that. You could go PCC, the full length of that. But when we applied for STBG, we were trying to fit the project parameters within the amount we thought we could get from an STBG grant. Along with the amount of money that we had already kind of planned as far as general obligation funds. So that's kind of the explanation on that.
But it wouldn't sacrifice the grant?
No, we would have to ask for an alternative on that, but I, you aren't changing any of the function. I think they would probably appreciate that. The one thing that Jesse and I, when we were talking about this, as it currently sits, you're going to have to have two kind of prime contractors on this. Because it's reconstruction and then also asphalt. So you don't have the same contractor doing both. You may have to split the project up and bid the north part and the south half separately. If you were to do all PCC, it'd be the same contractor, which could give you better pricing, but I mean, you never know. So if we want to look at doing that type of a, I don't, I'll wait till the end maybe. And have a discussion about that type of alternative project. And ultimately, this doesn't mean a lot until you have the understanding of the context of money. What's available, what does it do to your levy rate? And the timing of what, how I got things to deliver to Travis and his analysis of it and back to you. I expected that I'd be coming back in November 30th to have this conversation, not fully again, but to at least understand the money side of things. Fiscal year 24, we have, I, I gave you an image just to kind of locate where those are. But I'm moving to the next page so I can talk about the money. Agency Street was our STBG grant, we were successful in getting that. We received 1.28 or 1.278 million for an estimated $1.8 million project. And that's Agency Street from Melrose to Curran. So essentially from the current intersection to where we left off with the previous project. It'd be a full-depth reconstruction for four lanes wide. And then we actually had sidewalks and things like that. So we're glad to have that STBG grant, that, that helps us immensely in being able to accomplish things.
Does it make sense to do four lanes there and not go to more of a complete street?
Matt, you guys, you're going to get close to the microphone.
Does it make sense to, to go, to stay four lanes there? Not, I mean, after you get past the commercial space, is the demand for traffic as significant? Where you could go to two lanes with a turn lane and save a few bucks?
I don't have the number, it's still a fairly high number even east of, of that kind of commercialized area. There's a lot, quite a bit of traffic flow that goes to the east to use Curran to access the highway. I could get you more accurate information for next time if you'd like to take a look at it. But when we applied for the STBG grant application, it was just a replacement.
We're probably, what, four years away from having a plans construction, or plans conversation on that project, so.
The problem is, is you lock yourself into an STBG grant application on what you're going to do. If you try and alter it too much, they, they, I don't think they can approve that change. I, I don't know how that would work if you alter it too greatly. I understand what you're trying to say is you could narrow it down essentially.
Yeah, and save, save a few dollars, but if the need is there, there's no point in narrowing it down.
No, I don't, I don't know that, I think that the need is there. I think that just replacing it and improving it would be much better. So the other three projects on that planned year are Terrace and Johansson. The asphalt numbers that we received this year inflated this amount. If I were to show you this compared to the last year five, last year's five-year road plan. You would saw like a 65% increase on the cost on what we were estimating from one year to another. Because that's how we, we just used the previous year's numbers and try and figure out what that price is. The, the change that, that we've put into this plan, Hagaman Street used to be in there. We replaced that with Division Street. Division Street, and I didn't put the parameters on that, but it is between Plain or Curran's intersection, up the hill to Liebrich. You'll notice that there's quite a bit of joint or de-cracking along the joints there. We think that we have an alternative where we could go in there and not have to do a full depth replacement. Where we can do a crack in seat or go in there and replace the joint and then do an overlay. And that would bring Division up to pretty good quality throughout the whole corridor, east, west.
What's that do to Hagaman?
Hagaman, in my opinion Hagaman isn't, is, it's not far off of being done. But my reluctance of doing Hagaman is as we weren't quite prepared. There, that Hagaman is still an area that has combined sewer system. And until we're ready to deal with that function of the sewer separation, I wouldn't want to replace the roadway and not have a plan for that sewer separation.
That street is absolutely terrible.
I agree, Division Street, however, in, when, when we're talking and sitting down, carries a huge volume of traffic in comparison to Hagaman. And it isn't all about that, but when you see something like Division Street starting to fall apart, I mean, this is 2024. That's three years from now before we tackle that project. Hagaman isn't getting any better either, but neither are a bunch of other streets. Unfortunately, when you only have, and this is, I mean, that's a relatively large year. We're doing larger projects, it seems like, and that questions how much you can do for bonding capacity. But we're able to tackle quite a bit because we leverage that STBG grant app of those dollars. So the other project on that fiscal year is Washington Street. We actually had that as a planned back in the day, STP, before it converted to STBG, the acronyms with, it's the same function. And they just changed the acronyms on a regular basis. It was an $867,000 project as an asphalt overlay from Front Street all the way to the bridge deck at Central. In talking with Jim about this project, we're replacing Jefferson Street and Main Street. We have availability to use tax increment financing monies in that district to be able to upgrade that to a concrete road. And I think it makes sense because if you look underneath of that roadway surface, it's brick. And that's a lot of the reason why that roadway is starting to fall apart is the brick underneath of it. So all this isn't on the GO bonding capacity, it's, some of it's on tax increment financing. Last year, you remember, we selected Summer Street as the grant application for STBG. It was a, it's an estimated $2.9 million project. We did receive STBG grant funds, we received all that they had available. It was 1.15 million, but which brings our obligation up to 1.76. Which a little higher than our typical kind of allotment that we had used to fix roads. But we are tackling a pretty big corridor to replace. And that is a full-depth concrete. We're widening the road out and then we're also doing some storm sewer. There's a lot of ditch work on the east part of Summer Street and then it kind of flows down. We've talked with the airport and put that in the application. These are some of the details we didn't talk about last year. But we'll take some of that storm sewer and put it in a retention pond a little bit to the south and east of where Summer Street is. So I think it helps with some storm water flows that they see not in town. A lot of that water gets discharged to the south and the county sees it. But the other thing to address with the Summer Street project is, you know, there was an incident that occurred on that roadway. I know lighting was one of the conversations. I don't, there are some limitations with the airport right there on how high or bright you can have that. But you could still have street lights. The other thing that we as a staff looked at was the idea of bringing a trail network through there. We have the trail that's down Mason Road and ultimately ends right before it gets to, it's right at the lift station, but is it right before Hagaman? But it ends into sidewalk at four foot wide. How we could eventually make a connection. And Summer Street has wide enough open right away and available ground that I don't think the airport would really balk at. Putting a trail network through there that could connect to the park. We don't have that as a part of this street project. However, I wanted to talk about it. It is an available TAP or Transportation Alternatives project. That money is available right away, where STBG you have to apply and then sit on it for, it's available in four years. So our timing isn't quite there for that project, but it's definitely something we've talked about. And is something I would maybe try and work together on that type of project. And I, I think you could probably leverage the dollars in a fairly good way because we're contributing, you know, 1.7 to that project. So I think it makes a lot of sense to do that type of project, so. To the fifth year, or 2026. I have options on there and I've listed three fairly sizable projects. Cascade Bridge, I've listed at $7 million. I put Sunnyside, that's the full corridor, and I'm going to break these down as I go through them, at 6.7. And then Valley Street at 1.5. So Cascade Bridge, I took a little bit of a shellacking for not having Cascade Bridge in the five-year road plan last year. So I'm, I'm addressing it mostly because in the, at the time, we were in the middle of, well, what are we doing with Cascade Bridge? And we've gone through that. I think that you as a council have heard what the public's input is on that bridge. And I think have the opportunity to make a decision. And it was in the goal setting, so I wanted to list it at what I felt was, you know, is an option for that fifth year in the road plan. It's not to say that that project couldn't move forward. Can't move forward too far because there's hoops that we have to jump through to get into there. However, it would mean big shifting of dollars on how you're going to be able to afford a project like that. If you remember in the Impact 7G's conversation, they estimated the bridge between three and $5 million. Well, that was today's dollars or eight months ago's dollars. And so I took an escalator of a 3% per year, which is not untypical. And so that was around $6 million. And I built another million dollars in there because we, we don't know what we're going to have to do to comply or make shippo happy. And I'm under the assumption that we're building a new bridge. That was what came from the goal setting. That's what I put in here. And I don't want to misstep on that, but I wanted to at least put it on there and generate some conversation about what we wanted to do there. And I'm going to move forward and then we can come back. Sunnyside, I had talked about Sunnyside Avenue last year about doing a full-depth reconstruction. In sitting down and talking how we would do that and what it would cost. I wanted to lay out what the full dollar project would cost on that. And then I also wanted to lay out kind of a phased approach on it. So you can see on the slide that I have, I have the three phases, which the first phase would have, would, in my opinion, the worst section is the west section. Where they did kind of the expansion overlay over top of some pretty shoddy soils and brick. And it's the part that I see generates a lot of the turning traffic, especially right in front of the school. Would be all the way to Irish Ridge and then next section from Irish Ridge to Aspen Grove Cemetery's entrance slash Sunnyside Elementary. And then that, the remainder would be the third op. And so you can see I have the dollar figures kind of broken down on what those three phases would be. Theoretically, you could go after just phase one as an S. I wanted to pair this where you could list out Cascade Bridge.
I got where you're coming from.
And then potentially go after a mostly funded STBG grant application for a roadway project. So to not exclude you from doing roadway work, you know, only doing a bridge and then setting yourself a little bit behind on where we go with roadway work. And I think that and then why I listed Valley as another option. It's a little bit of a, and so I listed, these break down, you know, the first phase is nearing $2 million. As, as seen in previous years, we're going to get about 1.1, 1.2, maybe 1.4 in available STBG. And we're not going to get it every year. We've been really lucky that we've gotten it the last three years in a row. I think we put really good applications together and I think we have good roadways that we're selecting. Because we're taking and attacking arterial and collector roadways. Valley Street fits into that category, but it's a little less cost. It's only, you know, that's a full PCC. You could do an overlay on Valley Street. I don't like it as much because I want to be able to improve the roadway surface and change the curb line. And I think PCC is the right way to go. So I wanted to lay these three projects out as options for you to select or to look at, selecting. I could have listed a number of roads on this fifth year, but it would have taken away from the exercise of what the five-year road plan is. You know, Oak Street is in terrible shape. Main Street, south of Harrison Street is in bad shape. However, we're doing the Mississippi Sewer Interceptor and we're going to take a pipe right up that road. So although it isn't in the five-year road plan per se, we're probably going to tackle that roadway through another means. So these are roads that I didn't see as happening, or they, they have need behind them and they have reasons why I think they should be up there. and they have reasons why I think they should be up there. But ultimately, I wanted to give council the idea to look through what those projects are.
Can you do an overlay on Hagaman?
I, I would think so. I think there's some faulting going on for some of those panels. The way they have those panels broke up isn't what we would trad- it's a fairly narrow roadway too, but they also, they only do, uh, curb cut, one down the middle and then, you know, horizontally. I think those panels are fairly big in today, you know, they do a lot shorter panels today. So, that way they have a little bit more give and take when things change and flex underneath of it. Um, you probably could do an overlay on that work, on that project.
I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with everything you've got here. The only thing I'll say is that Hagaman needs to find its way into that, whether it's a, an overlay or something. It's just, I, and I, I, maybe I notice that street more just because I drive it regularly. But that street is really, really, really bad. It's, it's one of the-
Which one, Matt? I didn't hear you.
Hagaman.
Hagaman.
Okay. I think Oak, Oak Street's terrible.
Oh, Oak, Oak Street's another one.
I think we all have a, a road, I think, we all have a road in our neighborhood we drive that could, could be replaced. That's for sure.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Just for it to be there and then fall out, we need to make, I don't, I don't want to get lost.
Nope, I agree. And this five-year road plan, other than the projects that we've obligated, have obligated ourselves in grants prior to, has changed on a regular basis. You know, things change over time. You know, three years from now, that road could just absolutely fall apart. Alligator cracking starts going in the asphalt and then it's all downhill from there.
Well, that's why we moved Central up.
And we can try, we can try and patch it from staff, but sometimes there's just no way you can get to, you know, taking care of that.
What are we talking about?
I'm just generally talking.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's been part of the, all along. A plan is a plan, but we realize you have to change them fly when a road starts to deteriorate.
Yep. So, I do have one last conversation that I want to have about the seal coat conversion. I know from the goal setting, um, that the public and you guys both voted that converting seal coat over to a hard paving such as asphalt and concrete, um, is something that's desired. I wanted to, to kind of give you an idea of what that would take, time and money-wise, and kind of give you a perspective of what the seal coat roads are and how many we have. Um, the first page shows you, you can't see the colors and I don't expect you to. Um, kind of gives you an idea of how much we have. The next page also has a map, I think is a little bit more readable. Um, but I wanted to show you kind of the cost difference perspective of what, uh, seal coat, HMA, and then PCC costs. Um, and then kind of their life expectancy timeframe. And then the chart below that shows how much seal coat we have in square footage, HMA, and then PCC. And then the typical roadway width, uh, that we have of each of those types of roadways. I think the thing that isn't, I don't know how to show it or discuss it, is the, that seal coat. We have some HMA, but we don't, we have way more seal coat that don't have any curb and gutter. Uh, we have seal coat where it's just, it fades off into a ditch-like area. In some cases, it isn't a ditch, it's just flat grass that deals with wet water all the time. Um, so I, that would be a big part of the, the change. But I wanted to give you a money perspective of what that would take, so that way you could kind of understand that. I, I didn't know how to address that conversation with Travis on what the perspective is on money. And I don't know what, what we have available with what levy rate. So, I wanted to give a perspective of this last, this current fiscal year. We did a seal coat project and I have that shown on the map. Um, that project cost us $420,000. Um, we have, um, Jesse has put together a table that shows the one, the one-time only, just, uh, let's do it all at once, cost replacement. If we were to replace all of our seal coat streets into PCC, it would be 60 million. Asphalt would be HMA. And if we were to do HMA, I would, would want to do curb and gutter. And that isn't, I don't think, he didn't factor that in. When you're trying to estimate that large of a thing, you're just doing square footage and what that square foot cost is. So, there would be some cost in curb and gutter and that would be, and that would probably be a pretty good chunk on top of that. And, you know, you're probably looking at 30, 35 million.
Even if you wanted to do it all day, it'd take 10 years to do it.
Well, and that's, what I tried to show you is, is it $2.44 million on an annual basis, it would take you 25 years to replace all the seal coat into concrete.
Yeah.
Um, at that point, you're, and the reason why I would go, if you're, if you're going to convert all seal coat to con, to a surface, I would prefer that you select to go to concrete because by the time you're doing, now at the timeframe that you, or the more you could do in asphalt, you could make up some of that time. But as you're installing that asphalt.
The lifespan's not that long.
The first stuff that you just installed is already gone. And so it's just going to be a vicious cycle of that money that you're going to have to spend specifically to that conversion. And not that, once you install infrastructure, you're going to have to pay money over time to improve that. Um, the one thing I would, I would want to bring up in this conversation is when we do sewer separation, such as what we've done in the Locust Basin, we've improved seven or eight blocks of seal coat roadway. You know, South Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Walnut, they're all in PCC. So, we're, we're using different dollars. Ultimately, it's all taxpayer city dollars, but we've improved them to concrete. Um, and I've tried to think of a, a good way for council and staff to try and look at what this conversion goal means and how we approach it. I think that one of the things that you can do is as we do sewer separation, we can say that we want to prioritize anywhere that's going to have any sort of touch on seal coat, that we're going to make the decision to, to change that surface type to concrete with curb and gutter.
Would it be inaccurate to say that it would require us to fund road repairs at an additional 1.2 million annually, uh, forever in order to, to change those over to concrete and maintain them?
I'd be honest with you, just taking the time.
If there's a 40 to 50-year lifespan, um, and you've got, uh, it would take 24 years to do it today.
Theoretically, and, and the number, that number there doesn't even show you what inflation costs.
Correct. So, that's today's money.
Today's money over time. So, I mean, you could choose to go that type of route, but, I mean, I think it could make sense. But I don't know that you have, we have that kind of money available to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's when that, uh, the goal plan and the goal setting, uh, as far as the input from the citizens, I don't think they said, hey, we got to have all concrete tomorrow or all concrete period or all, all pavement. But I think there is a general desire when you, because I've seen it before you got here where we seal coated Main Street, which is a main arterial. Now, I think our main roads should be concrete or asphalt, however it's determined. Seal coat for us is going to be a matter of reality. But with, just like, I think, I think where that, what I took from that goal setting amongst us and also with the citizen input, is that they would, when there's possible financially, we'd like to see the road redone right. And this music to my ears to hear you to say, we'd rather wait on, on a section road if we're going to do some piping or sewer separation. Because in years past, well before your time, growing up here, it seemed like we would just pave Main Street or Washington. And then very six months later, we're digging it up. And so doing that logistic, that holistic planning as far as the whole area, that is what we need out of, out of staff. And thank you for doing that. Because that in the long run, in my mind, has to save us some money down the road or at least saves us some discomfort and redoing roads that we've already paid to do once. So, that's, that's what I, that's what I took from the goal setting. I know we're going to have some seal coat, Nick, uh, but when it's a main road, we really want to do whatever we can to pave it. And I'm speaking for myself. The other council might have an idea on that.
I think, I think it's a great idea. Um, I just don't know, taking, taking into consideration everything I know about how the city's built and how it funds itself, that we will ever be able to afford to do that without kicking other major projects down the road, which I wouldn't recommend, or raising taxes. Now, if we can grow as a community, you know, if we're a community of 60,000 in 15 years and we're booming, have at it. But, um, I mean, we're, we're sitting here looking at a five-year plan that maxes out our budget. Actually, it goes beyond that. Um, and then you start to get into your fiscal year 26 and, you know, there's $11 million, $13 million of projects there, um, that aren't GO-funded. And then, um, and, and we're only going to fund about two and a half, three million based on what we're doing today, right, of roadworks. So, I mean, it's a great idea and a, and a great goal. I just, I don't see any way in the foreseeable future how it makes financial sense.
So, I didn't know how to address it, so I just thought I'd throw all that information at you.
So, we're at the conversation.
The one thing I would want to go back to and have a conversation on is, and ultimately I get that it comes down to dollars and what, um, our financial advice is on what we can afford to do. However, is, is there a preference on what we would like to look at for a fiscal year 26-type project? Um, I guess.
Well, for me, the 26 is Cascade. That's a top, that's a top, that's been a top priority is what citizens keep saying. They want it replaced. So, for me, if we could, if we could delay a little bit on Sunnyside or the other road projects, we got to, we got to do it at some point in time.
See, I think, I-
That's for me. But in the meantime, looking for grants and whatever else we can do to lower our cost.
I would rather see us take care of the Phase One Sunnyside and Valley Street that year. Um, and instead push Cascade, I'd actually, we have promoted the idea that we will have the potential to be able to fund that project in 2024. That's in my mind when I see that project taking place. So, I hope that when fiscal year 26 rolls around, we're not even having that conversation because it's already done. So, um, I don't view Cascade as much as a road project, um, as I do some of the other flatwork.
It, it competes with the other dollars that you're trying to spend on roadwork.
It all, it all competes.
I don't see it as a road per se, but it's part of the road network and competes with the same dollars. So, I, I wanted to address it.
Yep.
Um, so, is there thoughts from the other two council members?
I agree that Cascade needs to be in there and I'm content to wait to 2024 because that's what I've been telling the citizens all along.
It's not in 2024 yet.
But, I mean, if we move it there, we talked about getting it there.
And ultimately, that's a, that's a dollar conversation that I think I will need, you know, to have some financial advice from Travis and then Jim, uh, you know, to be able to have that conversation.
I think we've had, I mean, we've had those conversations. It was in the CIP.
You, you've had that conversation, but you don't also have the perspective of what some of the other projects are doing to that and what that dollar figure is.
Well, uh, Jim's chiming in, you know, and obviously it's what we just said. You can't fund all these projects in, on the list in this timeframe. He did say the Valley could potentially be a TIF project. So, that's one-
We did, and we did talk about that.
Yeah, so that's something we can look at. Um, you know, I, I guess right now, what's, what's, on the 2020, on 23, you've got the question on Madison.
Yeah, yes.
So, it's 1.8, let's call it 1, 1.8 million to do, to do it with sidewalks.
It's a project that has been brought up and discussed numerous times in front of city council. And as we are going to start getting into that type of design process here over the next six months, I just would want to address whether or not we have the ability to change that. And so I just want to have that conversation.
Well, I, you know, most of these conversations are going to be based off what Jim or Travis advises on. So, I would, I would like to look at that 20, for the fiscal year 23, that possibility. See what that does to us financially.
Uh, what, what, what do you say?
The Madison 9th, the Madison 9th on fiscal 23, Matt.
Are you saying bump, bump that project?
No, I'm saying do the full, full reconstruction.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Uh, full reconstruction, that's a big chunk of roadway. I'd, I'd like to talk about that. Um, the rest of it looks fine to me. But when it comes to 26, you know, we may be able to move, financially move Cascade up to 24, but planning-wise and everything else, we're, we're going to have to take some time. But it, it needs to be in the plan somewhere.
So, Nick, is it, would it be wrong of me to think that if we're going to go out and rebid the Tiger Grant and potentially talk to some larger contractors that may try to bring their own plant in? Would it make sense to also use them to try and save dollars on these types of projects during those years?
That's, well, that's our plan for, you know, Harrison Street.
Right.
I mean, also, you can, you can, I mean-
We have three years of Tiger projects. I mean, we have Main Street, we have Jefferson Street, we have Riverfront. I would think that if they're going to, if they're going to bid the first phase and they get that award and they're going to build a plant, they would likely bid the following two phases and build a plant. Just try and be more competitive.
If, if they can come in and do that, then we could, you know, see what that dollar does for the quantity pricing. But I don't think there's any reason why, if it, if it were to happen that way, it wouldn't be a benefit. And if we had some of that, you know, concrete dollars cost come down. Well, I know that there is a missing part of this conversation and that, I don't want to say is the most important, but ultimately is a, it's a, it's a deciding, you know, decisive factor.
It's also an intent and emphasis, and that's what you're looking for from us, correct?
Correct.
Intent and emphasis, and then we'll have to figure it out financially. Uh, I will say, and Jim is just loving texting into this meeting, thanks, Jim, keeping me busy all day today. Uh, this, I get more input from him this way than we do when he's at the meeting. He said you can't fund, fund all the projects on this list in this timeframe, obviously. Valley, uh, Cascade Bridge would be 2026. Tough to move it to 2024 without delaying the other projects, so that's probably not going to happen. And he said change in Madison isn't feasibly, financially feasible without delaying the others. So, we'll have to decide what we're looking at on that. But I would like to have him here and also get some input from Travis, uh, as far as what our options are. But do we agree with the emphasis on the, the roads that, that Nick has laid out? I guess is what you're looking for tonight, correct?
Up through 2025, I'm fine.
Okay.
And then ultimately, if you were to select something like a Valley Street with TIF using the, to leverage those TIF dollars to get, go after STBG, I would need to start working on that type of an application relatively soon as they're due, um, December 30.
Yeah, if it can be a TIF.
So.
You know, it's worth at least looking at.
I mean, if we can TIF Valley Street, that's great. But one question I have is, are we saying that we prioritize Cascade Bridge over Sunnyside? If Sunnyside needs to be replaced as a council? Is that what we're saying? Because I don't know if I can get on that train. Not, not because I don't value Cascade Bridge.
The way I understood it, Matt, is there's only so much money to go around. So, if we wanted to bump Cascade up to 2024, something else would have to take a backseat. That's how I understood.
And ultimately, that means not just the 26-years project. That would mean 25, something would have to potentially change there.
It's in 26 and it's going to have to stay there, unfortunately.
Cascade?
It looks like. That's what, that's what-
Well, but he, but you're asking us for what we believe is more important, Sunnyside or Cascade, right?
In the fiscal year that I have presented.
And are we giving him an answer that we?
That's, I understand, but that's five years from now.
No, I understand.
So, what theoretically, if we go out and we could apply and hopefully get some either grant funding. Uh, I mean, I could see where you would do a Phase One of Sunnyside and the bridge somewhere in there. And you might have to do Sunnyside over a course of a couple of years. That's why there's Phase One, Two, and Three, right?
Who are you, who are you looking at? Me or not?
I was talking to you and-
Oh, okay, I'm-
I was looking at both you guys in the class.
I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we're not saying to the Public Works Director that we want him to focus primarily on the bridge if Sunnyside is failing.
No, well, I mean, I'm-
Because while, while the bridge is important, Sunnyside services almost the entire northern half of the community.
Man, it's like, it's like the plan and I hope the citizens understand. We moved Central up because it was, you know, it was going a hill and a hand basket.
Yeah.
And so there, this, this is the plan, but plans change and we realize that. I think we, as this council realizes that, and Nick, that's what Nick's trying to tell us too, and, and Jim. So, yeah, but it's a matter of emphasis and with emphasis, I'm okay with your plan, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
We'll look at the Madison deal, but if Jim's saying we can't pull that off unless there's something else we can do, I don't know. We'll have to discuss that for 2023. That's where I'm at. Bill, any input?
I see the citizens have talked a lot about Cascade. We have to get that in there.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Now, if Sunnyside goes bad, then we might have to do something else. But Cascade should be there.
Needs to be in the conversation.
And I put my preferential on what Sunnyside could be or what we should do to Sunnyside. I put it as a PCC full-depth replacement. Asphalt work is a lot cheaper and a lot quicker than concrete. And as you, as you've noticed, we, my staff have done a patchwork on Sunnyside. And as you, as you've noticed, we, my staff have done a patchwork on Sunnyside to try and get it along. It was some of the worst section. It's just when you're starting to talk this five-year road down, road plan, five years is a long time on a road. And it could, and it's going to start to fall apart even worse. So we can limp it along further than that. We can't limp along the bridge in theory. I mean, it's not open, but, so anyway, I'll move forward with a planned STBG grant application for Valley Street. Or would you, theoretically, you could do it for Sunnyside for Phase 1. You're not using TIF dollars at that point, you're using competing GO monies.
I would, I would rather do the STBG on Sunnyside and look at tiffing Valley, which is what Jim, Jim has already suggested.
But I don't, I think he means that in conjunction with an STBG grant application. I don't think you're going, I'd have to have a conversation with him about using TIF to fund the whole project.
All right, well, let's, let's, I think we're somewhat in agreement all the way up to 2025, 2026 is in question. Let's get with Jim, sort out where we're at financially and we'll get some input from Travis and then maybe you can come back to us.
I will be back November 30th.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
I mean, I'll be back sooner than that, but.
Yeah, you'll be back sooner. Okay, any, let's see, anything from Chief Klein, Chief Trexel? You're quick with the nod, no, chief. Don, you got anything? Eric, no. Stephanie, here she comes.
Say what? No, I don't, I don't really have anything to talk to us.
I just wanted to give an update. We did some Zoom interviews today for the police chief candidates. We're working on the list that will be approved by the civil service. But just to put some dates down, just like for the city manager search, the in-person interviews will be Friday 12, 4, December 4th and 5th. We're looking on doing some interview panels on that Friday afternoon, the 4th. And then the city council will interview Saturday morning. So if you, like I said, that's December 5th.
It's hunting season, Stephanie.
It's what?
It's hunting season.
Okay.
That's our, I'm just kidding.
What are you going to be hunting?
I'm not hunting, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, okay. But yeah, so as soon as we get any more information, we'll let you know, but that's the dates right now.
Thank you very much. Nick, do you have anything from yourself?
I do not.
Do you have anything that's standing in for Jim?
I like how he comments more now during this meeting when he's not here. It shows his trust in my leadership, I suppose.
Now he's right because he lost connection. All right, so nothing from Bill. You got anything, Matt?
I don't.
No?
Thank you.
Linda?
It's daylight savings time, people are tired, it gets darker earlier, drive safe.
Okay, radio is Wednesday, I can do it. Somebody want to go with me?
I can do it.
Okay, me and Matt, unless somebody else wants to do it.
I'm Wednesday.
Looking at you.
I know, I can't Wednesday.
Okay, so it's you and me and Matt. That's it, thanks everybody.